Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August twelfth, twenty twenty four, Plenary Board Meeting. If you have first, please stand for pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, first we'll go to correspondence. You want to talk about what we got?
No.
There's one piece of correspondence I think we're all very upset with up here. Our member, Robert Bellin, will be resigning his post from the board. September first, twenty twenty four, and moving on to bigger and better things. As one member of this board, I can't state enough how much your your expertise and all your knowledge of what we do and your field has helped this board and, of course, this great town of ours. So I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done for us in the town.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
All right, Murphy, get the cops. I'll come to the desk.
I'm Sergio.
All right. We also have meeting minutes from July fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Any comments, corrections, or alterations?
None.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we'll move into regular portion of the meeting. First up is the Garden Lane Apartments. This is a request for a one-year time extension. Location is Oak Crompound Road in Garden Lane. How you doing?
Good evening, everybody. Anthony Peely, one of the sponsors of and principals of Garden Lane Development. Just here seeking a one-year approval, extension to the approval that was granted.
Any concerns from the board? John?
None here.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
That being said, do I have a motion to request a one-year time extension for Garden Lane Apartments?
Motion.
Second.
All is in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next we have the Volta EV charging stations at Staples Plaza. They're requesting a second one-year time extension. Location is three thousand three hundred and thirty-three Crompound Road. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good evening. Allison Fauzer, attorney with the law firm Cuddy and Fader, appearing on behalf of Volta. Volta seeking additional one-year extension just to permit it additional time to file a building permit application. We've recently been in touch with the planning department, so hope to file it soon.
Okay, any issues or concerns from the board?
No comment.
No.
John?
None here.
Counselor?
We're here.
Okay, then. Do I have a motion for the request for a second one-year time extension?
Motion.
Second.
All is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Take care. Okay, next we have Wipe Your Paws. This is a decision statement for a special use permit. Location is two zero one three Crompound Road. How you doing?
Hi, how are you? Christina Racanelli for Wipe Your Paws.
So we understand the code passed through the town board?
That's correct.
So it's been green lighted? Any other comments, concerns, questions from the board? I think we should the floor plan we were looking for? I think so, yes. I believe that's in there.
And everything on this application comports with the law that was just enacted. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. The law is here.
Any concerns about the layout?
No.
Good. Okay, then.
No problem.
So, well, let me get to the... That being said, John, we're clear?
Clear.
Counselor?
No, no issues, Mr. Chair.
All right, then. So we have a resolution approving the special use permit for pet care facility for Wipe Your Paws. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, all the best. Okay, do I have a motion to move into the work session portion of the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All is in favor.
Aye.
First up, we have Savannah's Restaurant. This is a discussion of site plan. Location is three zero one zero Crompound Road. How are you?
Good, how are you? David Tetrel, architect. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Why? Why are you leaving?
Go back into therapy. First time I was here...
This is all the therapy you need.
First time I was here, I left for about twenty years or so, and I was just about back to abnormal when I asked to come back here, so. Okay. What do we have?
Okay, so we are... So there's two moving parts with this. There is a, there was a, the front porch that was being enclosed. It was originally outdoor seating, so the Savanas wanted to enclose that. Wait, no. Yeah, sorry. Savanas wanted to enclose that, which didn't impact any of the occupancy. When we went for permitting for that, the planning board came out, and there were some things that needed to be updated on the on the site plan, which we did. So this application, I guess, is just for you, a general site plan update. We're proposing some outdoor seating in the back on a patio, but the permit for the first portion of the project was not allowed to be released until the site plan was amended. So I believe that we're here just for the site plan amendment?
Can you tell me what's being amended?
There was some fencing that was installed around some of the mechanical equipment. The dumpsters were relocated from the original site plan, and there was some pavement added to this, which is being handled by a site engineer who's still working with the engineering department. So, John, I don't know where this overlaps.
Okay. So you're looking to clear the enclosure of the front porch tonight? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm not, that's what I'm not sure about, because I know you wanted, or when I say you, the the town wanted an updated site plan.
Right.
So it's, the site plan is kind of linked to both.
Yes, it is.
So I'm not sure if we can handle both of these projects with the site plan or not. Because the other, the other, the front porch is ready to go. We're just waiting for a building permit which won't be released until the site plan's approved.
Yeah. So the the last iteration here was that you reviewed the outdoor, I should say, the the front porch seating and the enclosure, but you wanted to have some of these site plan issues corrected. So you were delaying the release of any building permit or work being done until the site plan came in. So the site plan's here, so I think you can let the permit for the front porch be issued. I'm going to note here that you have additional outdoor seating and outdoor dining now proposed with the outdoor, with the, I should say, the back patio. So that will be something that you need to review and decide upon as you review this amended site plan. Does that sound correct?
Was there a problem with the DEC on this one?
No.
No?
Okay.
And parking is okay?
The parking, we we relocated parking on the site. So we didn't lose any parking. We just shifted it around. So the site plan amends, the amended site plan picks up the new parking layout.
You had four conservation spaces and you put them in the back?
What we did was we had more room in the back, so we, the the four conservation spaces were in the back. We shifted them and then relocated parking that was being consumed by the new rear seating patio and also adding more parking based upon the additional seating that that patio was going to to have.
Okay.
So Dave, can you explain a little bit? There was part, a portion of the rear parking lot that was paved after the original approval, correct?
Correct.
Okay, what's the disposition of that?
Currently, they have a site engineer, and the site engineer is working with Dan and and the engineering department to figure out what they need to do. So there's been some back and forth going on between them. And I was trying to get an update on that, but I didn't get an answer for it.
Okay.
So I know something is in the works.
All right.
But I, it's it's drainage related, but I I don't know where, they're confused as to what the town is looking for. So they're trying to work it out with the engineering department to kind of just figure out what the steps are going to be.
The town is looking for the amended site plan, which would include the final disposition of that portion of the parking, which if it remains paved, will need to update the the stormwater
Correct.
team on that property approved by this board.
Correct.
That that's basically where you're going.
Yeah. So so they are, they are, they are dealing with that. This was submitted in just as a general kind of site plan for the parking layout, for the seating, for that sort of, for the...
Well, they're they're going to have to go together.
Yeah, but I don't see a, conceptually, I don't see a problem with the layout as long as with the technical issue can be addressed.
So I believe, my understanding is that for the front porch, that a permit was be allowed to be issued so long as there was design work being done to address some of the issues that the planning board found. That was a year, it was over a year ago, so.
I don't know where you heard that.
At the meeting. I think, I think it was in the resolution.
I mean, usually, usually we we produce a positive or acceptable site plan that then turns the applicant loose to implement the changes to the building. Not, not to do the reverse, not to implement changes to a building while the ongoing site plan is still being reviewed.
Understood.
So that's my my only comment on that, unless the board feels otherwise. I don't know procedurally, yeah.
Well, is one dependent on the other?
The the porch in the original approval was shown as as seating, right? Outdoor seating?
It says outdoor seating.
It says outdoor seating. It didn't have number on it or anything like that. So then we saw the plan with the number, and we went out and did a site visit, and there were some things that required really a site plan amendment. One of them is the paving that we spoke about. There were some modifications to some amenities on the site plan. So that's why they're here for that. At the, at that time, the board basically said we have no problem with the outdoor seating in the front porch area and that it can be enclosed, but we want to see a site plan move forward before we assent to that. That's the last way that it was left.
So is is it fair to characterize the site plan as basically agreed upon? It just has to be created in a final form? I mean, we we were looking at parking and so forth. I think, other than the engineering for drainage, there's very little to be added to that, I would think.
Well, the the new, the new wrinkle here is the outdoor patio in the back.
Okay.
So that's a new wrinkle, because it's going to cause some additional parking requirement.
Oh.
And then I think that, I think that the, whatever will happen with the paving that was not on the original approval needs to be in front of this board, probably as a single package, along with the site plan. So it will have the stormwater, whatever stormwater has to go along with it
Right.
as part of this package. So what you have here is showing what's on the ground now and the proposed rear patio. So you have to, you have to review the patio in terms of its seating and demand, which I don't see a number here, which probably going to need a number of seats applied to it.
I believe it's in the calculation table above it. I didn't put it like right on the plan that said the number of seats.
Got it, okay.
Just to go to the seating, there is a note on the plan which says that we're taking some indoor seating and moving it outside seasonally.
Correct.
But there's no reason you can't, at some point, if you wanted to, keep the outside seating and the inside seating.
And I ran the calculations with that in mind. So it's as kind of just a, look, when when the, when the patio is open for seasonal seating, there's some seating that had, on the inside that has to go away just for circulation and ingress purposes. It, we can't keep it full, but my calculations do include both, just in case.
So it sounds like, John, once we have a full package?
Yeah, I think you need to, I need, I think the engineering department needs to figure out what they're figuring out, and then it needs to get into into your package with that. And then I think we'll do a little, it seemed, I'm going through your calculations, I would think, maybe some clarifying lines here and on your parking re- review.
What do you mean?
I I'm just, I I just want to review it with you and make sure that it's saying what it's supposed to say.
Sure, gotcha. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so the engineering portion, I'm going to have to follow up with the owner on that, because I thought by now there was at least going to be a letter or something brought in by them saying that, hey, look, we're on board. This is what we're doing. This is what's going on. So I have to follow up with the owner on that and see. I didn't realize that this is kind of almost an incomplete submission.
I think the best bet, and we ask this of most applicants, is to get together in one room with all the players.
Sure, well.
Hammer all that out.
And that's, that's where we left off, and I thought there was going to be some motion with that.
Your client's here.
Oh, good. Just in time.
I've just got a de- a detailed question. On the, on the plan that we have in front of us, there is an existing trash enclosure.
Correct.
But it it looks, the way it's drawn, that the curb prevents any, any vehicle from approaching that enclosure to pick up the dumpsters that are in it.
Um, it's not a curb.
Okay. It's just a limited pavement, pavement?
Yes.
So the distance between the pavement and that enclosure is not paved, so I think it probably should be to allow a truck to pull up there without...
Is the, is the area with the dumpsters paved?
You got to step up.
It's gravel.
Yeah, yeah, right there.
It's gravel. Well, the, with the new...
When it's a truck coming up there, it's going to be driving over line or whatever. Doesn't show it is being paved.
Help me out. What am I looking at?
Okay, so the enclo- the enclosure for the, the proposed enclosure for the
Garbage.
The dumpsters.
Okay.
The ground surface of that is gravel?
Well, part, most of it is gravel, and then the, then the rest of it's blacktop on this, oh, the one that's there, yeah, that's all, it's gravel.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So my only comment is that I I think that should get paved and when the other improvements are done, just to to make it a more permanent, more durable entry to the, to the enclosure, that's...
Yeah, that and and sanitary reasons.
Exactly, yeah.
I think there's a portion that it is paved. I think some of it is...
Yeah, I think we just have to extend it into the enclosure.
Yeah, I think most of it is paved already.
Okay.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Nice to see you, bud.
What's going on with, he was explaining that the pavement in the mid portion of the parking lot that was done, you know, subsequent to the, your original approval? You're in discussions with, your engineers in discussions with our town engineer? Is that what's happening?
Yes, but I don't think it's gotten any solution yet, so.
Well, right, okay, so that, what we said, so you know, is that that really has to come here and be one package, more or less.
What does that mean exactly?
That means that their site plan with the stormwater improvements on it has to be part of this application in that set of drawings.
So they sent, I think I was speaking with Robin, actually, and they put, they sent something over, right? Didn't they send an application or something that was, that was asked about?
Submitted to EA, yeah. It's not a separate project. They just need to come together. That's not, it's nothing, just needs to get in front of this board, is all I'm really saying, so.
I thought it was the site plan that wanted to be front of this board first.
Storm, the stormwater and the, and the paving of the parking lot is part of the site plan, so.
The stormwater and the paving of the...
The paving of the area that we just spoke about is part of the site plan amendment.
Right.
When you figure out what stormwater amenities have to be done to...
Well, I can't get that unless you guys tell him what he want, what what you want, and that is the problem.
Okay, that stuff has to come here, then.
But they've already had conversations with, I thought that once we got the ball rolling, that you, you guys were okay with the enclosure, and then we were going to address all that. Am I, we're not on that page?
Yeah, we are.
Okay, so am I going to get the permit for the enclosure?
It's up to these guys right here. That's, that's the way, I just explained, that's how it was left off the last time you were here.
Right. That as long as the ball was rolling, which it is, we're rolling and we're going to get that addressed.
Right. We have two balls rolling. We're going to make one ball.
Yeah, but that stops me from rolling the first ball.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't.
And you know, I didn't say that. Okay.
I said, this, this is going to move forward, but we got to bring, you know, a couple of things up.
I know that, but I can't make a plan for the, for anybody to do anything, and the application's been in for a long time, and we're trying to move forward.
What we can do is hold back the CO. Yeah. So let's do that.
I mean, all we want to do is enclose the porch for now, and and then, since, since we added the patio as a site plan option, obviously, if I want to get that on there.
Not to interrupt, but I think we, I think we have a...
We have a solution.
I love solutions.
All right, so it sounds like, and who's the end, the site engineer?
Uh, that's, um, oh, my goodness.
James, give me a last name.
Cronin, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Cronin, yes.
All right, so I think we got to get the architect and the engineer together. Work with Mr. CRC, who just walked in. While that's going, we'll, I guess, okay the permit being issued with the caveat that we need to get the plan in to clean up the site prior to the issuance of the CO.
Yeah, and that was, I'm sorry, that was actually something that they, that the engineer was supposed to submit, a letter, a certified letter of sorts, saying that they will, that they're working on all stormwater and everything, so.
Dan, you want to help us out here?
We'll work with Dan, we'll work with the engineer, we'll get that.
But that's always been the the challenge of this project, is that you guys were holding back a CO. Now, I I get that, but I can't operate with that one, so that's a huge...
I understand that, and we love Savanas.
I'm glad to.
And all your restaurants.
Thank you.
And we want to see you do well and...
Thirty-five years trying to employ all these people, so.
So on our end, we just receive material and review them. I think somehow the struggle here is to get the professionals all together to kind of iron these things out. So I think, and Dan, do you want to speak to this application, where it is, or?
I, I guess, you know, the the issue, I guess, is that additional paving that doesn't show up on the site plan that was approved, right? That's kind of the issue we're talking about. So there was never any stormwater to mitigate that, since it was never contemplated on the site plan that's currently, the site plan that's before you, or, you know, the one that the CO is predicated on.
So, all right, so the original...
Can I ask you a big question? Does anyone know how many square feet that that is? Because isn't there some sort of rule that if it's under five thousand square feet, it it doesn't, we wouldn't even be talking, so I don't... Well, I mean, the unfortunate reality is that you're in what's considered a designated Main Street.
And everybody on two oh two is, and they all have blacktop, so I don't get it. I mean, I'm just putting that out there.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just calling it as it, as it is, you know, that...
No, no problem.
That the, unfortunately, it's in the designated Main Street, so DEP gets a bite of the apple on the stormwater for minor increases in impervious. So there are other outside agencies, governmental agencies, that look this beyond us, and I hear you with the other you know, occupancies along the strip. A lot of them predate those codes.
Some don't. I drive that road every single day.
And if there's some that don't, we need to know about them, if they're not done legally. But I always equate, you know, things that were done in the seventies to nineteen seventies car emissions. Things today in twenty twenty four are completely different. It's like driving a Chevelle to a Prius, so.
I understand. I just need these guys to figure out what...
So what we need to do...
That's reasonable, obviously.
And I, I, we all understand that.
Okay.
You got very good architect, good engineer, have them sit down with Dan, John, and work out the details. In the meantime, we'll okay the issuance of the permit, so you can get that ball rolling. I'm sure that between the time you get the contractor in place, the work is done, that you'll have worked out these issues far in advance, so we could set everything sailing.
So are we talking about the patio as well, or we're just, are we just talking about the enclosure as far as permits are concerned?
Was the issue with the...
Well, we, we don't, you haven't reviewed the patio yet. We just saw it for the first time.
We just saw the, for the first, what we saw originally was the porch.
That's correct.
And then, if, correct me if I misspeak, because I wasn't on the sidewalk. Then a sidewalk was conducted, and I guess the back area was paved, and that wasn't in the original calculations for stormwater.
Right.
And the DEP, I guess, has to sign off on that, too. So what we have to do is get that corrected, so that, you know, we're in compliance with the DEP. In the meantime, I would get everything in, so we can start looking at that patio and get the, the parking straightened out, or whatever stormwater you got to work out. In the meantime, you can start working on the porch.
Okay, so I can come down and pick up a permit?
That's not up to us. That's up to the builder, Inspector.
So you're going to pass on...
John will, yeah.
John, you'll pass on to that, so I can do that, because that's what they're waiting on. Okay. All right.
You need a resolution?
You need a vote, or?
You need a resolution on that?
A memo?
No, I think it's part of the original, the last resolution that you, we did, is it?
All right, so good.
Part of the minutes, you discussed it, and that's what you agreed upon in the minutes, so.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
If you have any problems, please reach out to the planning department, so they can get the...
I have them on my phone.
Excellent. John's on speed dial?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good seeing you.
Yep.
All right, next we have Curry Honda. This is a discussion of site plan, location three eight four five Crompound Road. How are you?
All right, good evening. Marty Stayscale from Architectural Visions.
Joel Greenberg from Architectural Visions. Uh, we have a memo from the, uh, from the building department, uh, which, at a point after Marty explains what we're doing, I'll, I'll address these issues.
Okay.
So our, our project is a renovation of the front facade of the Honda. Honda Corporation has a new image program that they want all the dealerships from here to California to look like. Uh, so they have a prototype, which I've submitted a rendering of their prototype. And so we're trying to achieve what they're looking for, but also trying to work with an existing building, because their standard prototype is for a cornfield in the middle of Iowa with thirty acres, and we don't have that much space, and, you know. We have setbacks that they don't have when they do these prototypes, so. Part of their requirement is a canopy overhang. There, you'll see that white band. It's a band of fins that stick out about three and a half feet, and then there's a four-foot projection out from the building before that. And it's a solid blue band of the building that wraps around like a bar and comes down to the ground. So it's a little bit more of a modern feel than the typical car dealership was.
Yeah.
As part of the front renovation, we're redoing the, uh, the parking area in the front there. We'll have a bunch of parking spaces, including a handicap, and some concrete sidewalks with display, uh, vehicle display space.
And what's going on on the, as you face the building on, with that whole carport area on the...
Okay, so at the carport, when you come in, right now, there's four parking spaces that are, uh, display vehicles. They're not customer parking. And on the right, we would like to add four more display vehicles on pervious pavers, so we don't end up having to have impervious surface added to the project. That way, by putting the display vehicles there, we don't have customers backing out into each other and into the drive lane. And we have our customers parking, they drive under the canopy, and then there's a bunch of parking spaces back in that lot there. They're designated there with the circles and the numbers.
Okay.
So the vegetation in front's coming out?
The vegetation in the front of the carport or the building?
In front of the used vehicle display.
Uh, some of it will come out to put in. That's the other part we're asking for, is three oval pads of gravel to have display vehicles there in the lawn, so we'll put back new landscaping there, but we'll have to have access, a gravel pad to come out there. So there's no, no more pervious surface there. It's just gravel, which would be impervious.
Man, it's just as we talked about with the last applicant, this is, you know, see asphalt. I think you got to work on the landscape plan, especially the building that you, the... Man, it's just as we talked about with the last applicant, this is, you know, see asphalt. I think you gotta work on the landscape plan, especially the building that you, the sample you submitted is beautiful.
Right, we're, and just to, just to clarify, we're not adding any asphalt.
I understand.
Okay, because I heard the word asphalt.
Taking away landscaping that's in the front, and you're adding gravel for display vehicles, right?
Well, we're taking away grass.
Grass, and you're putting gravel, but to get to that grass, there's a hedge.
Yeah, there's a hedge.
We just happened to do a sidewalk out there, I think, two weeks ago for several.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
So we're on the site, just happens that this.
No, we're not taking out the, I mean, to get access, we don't need to take the entire hedge out, because we're only creating three access points.
I understand.
But we can recreate that.
I think that's something you gotta look at, should the, the plan is.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions, or?
No.
Pretty straightforward, looks like a nice looking project.
Thank you.
Miss anything, John?
I don't have anything this moment.
Alright, so keep working with the planning department.
He's gonna address the.
Yeah, I know, I guess.
Building department.
Gentlemen have the memo from the planning, from the building department?
Yeah, you have it?
I don't have it in front of me.
Yes, I have it here.
Oh, okay. Well, basically, the three items that the, uh, building department, uh, addressed, and the first one was fire apparatus, access roads, uh, it may be difficult to see, but if you, if you show the back of the building, uh, they're con, they were concerned about being fire trucks and emergency vehicles being able to get around there. But if you see at the top there where the, uh, uh, car wash is, from the car wash, uh, to the fences, over fif, over fifteen feet, which is more than adequate for a fire truck or emergency vehicles to get by. The third item that was, uh, addressed by the building department was the stand pipe, and, uh, if you look at the front of the building, all the way to the left, left of the, uh.
Actually, I have a.
Actually, we have a better.
I have a blow-up photograph here, so it's right on the, on the front corner of the building, and there's a blow-up of it.
So we, basically, we've addressed the three items from the building department.
Alright, well, I would include that in your.
Yes, and, of course, but again, we just got this a few days ago.
Understood.
Alright, well.
Alright, so keep working with the various departments and hope to see you soon.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
You will, you will.
Um.
Thank you.
Got something?
Well. I think.
Hold on a second, is that on this one?
Do you wanna set up for, uh, PIH?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Joel.
We're gonna set you up for a public informational hearing?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll work together.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Get notices out and things like that.
That's, uh, the next meeting?
Yeah, have, work out the schedule.
Work out the schedule.
Okay.
Alright, next on the agenda, number eight, we have Nantucket Sounds LLC. This is a discussion of amended site plan, location three eighty-five Kear Street. Okay, we'll move on to next. Number nine, Guiding Eyes for the Blind. This is a discussion of the site plan, location's three two four one Crombound Road. Your honor.
Good evening.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you, good to see you all. David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zarin and Steinmetz. Pleased to be here this evening representing Guiding Eyes for the Blind. Good to be back before you on this matter. I'm joined by Joe Rena, project engineer. Our clients, Tom Panic and Bill Ma are here as well, and who do we have with us tonight?
Mr. Ten.
Mr.?
Ten.
Mr. Ten. Obviously, the most important of the client group. Um, we have been here for, uh, a number of meetings. We secured site plan approval to get Mr. Ten and, uh, a lot of his, uh, colleagues, a wonderful new state-of-the-art kennel facility at the subject property. We're, we're really here to, to let you know we're on the final approach now to commencement of construction. Um, we, I would very much like to get Tom and, and Guiding Eyes into the ground, um, as quickly as possible. Um, Joe Rena has successfully secured a New York City DEP approval, uh, not an easy feat. Joe did a, uh, an amazing job. We have, we now have that, and we're ready to proceed to try to finalize and get a signature, um, on the site plan. We are waiting still for, uh, the New York, to, waiting for the Westchester County Department of Health and the New York State DOH to agree upon, um, and issue approvals for our sewer. Joe can explain, uh, greater detail on that as necessary. That is really the only thing that's standing in the way of our coming back to you, um, with a finalized site plan. So we wanted to update your board on where we are procedurally, and we're really here for the following request. We would like to begin work on the wetland remediation that you all previously reviewed and approved. That includes, um, repairing and replacing the, um, culvert at the front of the property under the existing driveway. That will also allow us to then get access onto the property and commence doing, um, tree removal. Our tree removal plan, our tree mitigation, all of that has previously been reviewed and approved by your board. So really what we would like is to figure out a mechanism with you and with staff to allow for some degree of work to take place while, while we are still waiting for DOH.
Is there a path forward for that?
Well, they, you'd have to do a, uh, wetland and tree permit, and it, the scope would have to reflect what their request is, and when they are ready, they can come back for the, the more general one that will cover the whole site at that time.
And that would be perfect. I, I had briefly previewed this with John, um, told him that we really would like to get in the ground, it's the right time of year, uh, for us to proceed. Um, I know that Tom and Bill and, and Guiding Eyes are, are ready, um, to, to get that off the ground, so if we can kind of bifurcate this into a two-step process, which is what I hear you saying, John. Um, Joe, what, 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 what do you need from us? Um, since you've got our wetland plan, you've got our wetland remediation, you have our tree removal, what do you, you just need a separate plan from Joe on that?
Yeah, I think a, a plan that shows, or, you know, I, I know you have this on several pieces of paper.
Yes, we do.
That can probably suffice. Um, and we can write the permit, the interim or temporary permit to those, to that scope of work.
Perfect.
And then it can be signed by the chairman.
I'm gonna modify my intro and say, I'm here this evening asking for a modified permit, uh, which bifurcates and gives us authorization based upon, uh, Mr. Tegger's comments that he has the various pieces of paper, and we would like permission to begin that work.
Anybody have any issues?
Well said, Joe.
I'm, I'm game with that.
Alright.
Yeah, if you, just make a vote, if you don't mind, so, and to do a permit, the temporary permit pursuant to the scope that they've described.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to go into special session?
So moved.
Second.
All's a favor.
Aye.
See that? You're getting me out of trouble.
That was a good procedural catch.
Do I have a motion to approve a temporary permit, wetland permit for the entrance of the Guiding Eyes facility?
Second.
All's a favor.
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, just clarification, temporary wetland and temporary tree removal as well?
And tree removal.
As related to the.
As related to the, exactly. Any questions for us in terms of anything else?
Good luck.
Good luck. One, one question, just generally, uh, your approval or preliminary approval from DEP, whatever it is.
Yes.
Reflects generally what the planning board has approved originally. Is that correct? There's no significant changes?
Yep, absolutely.
So. Good evening, everybody. So the, um, we do have full DEP approval. They've issued, um, a letter of approval, as well as, uh, sign and stamp their, uh, the drawings and the SWIP report. The footprint of the site is the same as you had approved, uh, when you issued your resolution of approval. The stormwater area is in the same location, which is, um, off to that bottom-left corner of the site there, and there's a, an inset at the top right, which, uh, gives you a little, uh, more detailed view, but that's the same location that we had for the stormwater management at the time. And so I, as I said, they have issued a full approval on that.
Good, okay.
Does that answer your questions, John?
Yeah.
The motion stands.
Good?
Good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. Alright.
Motion to close the special session? Oh, yes, thank you.
Second.
All's a favor.
Aye.
So you can't leave now. See, Aaron lets me get in trouble.
I'm gonna have to text you from afar.
That's alright.
Yes, future chairman.
That's right, zoom him in.
Yeah.
Alright, we see the people from Nantucket have showed up. Nantucket Sounds LLC, discussion amended site plan, location three eight five Kear Street. I just wanna, from the outset, say, we do have, uh, we don't have a core, a full board tonight, it's four members, just so you're aware from the beginning.
Understood.
Okay.
Good evening. Joseph Thompson here for the Nantucket Project three eighty-five Kear Street, again for continued review of the site plan, changes that have been proposed. Um, thank you for holding our position. Uh, on our end too, the engineer that's produced the report had a family emergency, but I have Mr. Bartley here this evening to present the engineering study that's been done to date since our last meeting, so if the board will allow, I'll pull up the roof plan and the, the report itself, and then Mr. Bartley could present.
What are you doing, board?
How you doing?
Thanks for having me for the second time around. Based upon our last, um, discussion where this, um, exhaust is concerned, um, we have gone through the most integral part of reviewing our aspect of how the intake will work and also the exhaust. So the engineer has came to the location and has spect the whole area of the roof, and have come up with decisions as how it will work, the exhaust will work in the fresh air, and, um, showing proven fact that, uh, those condensers cannot work upstairs with these units. So if you take a look on the outlay, you could understand the issue that will come up with those, um, condensers, given the fact that the roof has, uh, padded, rubber type roof. We will need more than four feet away from the edge of the wall, those e from the condenser for them to operate. So if you have any question with this concern, I'd be willing to answer them.
I have a procedural question, in, in that we're proceeding with a conversation about duct work that is being proposed in a place where the air conditioning units were supposed to live, and this board has not granted the applicant relief from complying with that part of the resolution, so I don't know why we're discussing this before we've answered the earlier question. It's making it sound like the air conditioning units cannot go where this is gonna go. I, I've said it at the last meeting, I've said it at the meetings before that, this can't go where the air conditioning units are supposed to be. So you're putting the cart before the horse, and my, in my single member of the board's position is that if this doesn't fit up there, it's because the air conditioning units belong there. So this board hasn't granted you relief from that requirement, so I think we ought to address that issue before we keep ignoring it and keep talking about other things. I don't want you to go under the, the supposition that this board is gonna look favorably on putting this up there and ignoring the requirement to put the air conditioning up there. I'm one board member speaking my, my opinion, but I've said it over and over again, and I don't think there's any doubt in anybody's mind in the public or anybody who listens to these meetings that that's been this board's position, so, and I, I'm only speaking for myself. So I think somebody ought to address that position or that question before we go further down a road that seems to ignore the, the bigger question, and I know this is not on you, just believe me, this is not aimed at you, but you're standing here, so, and the architect is standing here, so somebody's gotta give us an answer, as far as I'm concerned, because I don't wanna waste your time, nor ours.
I don't understand your, your, your question regarding that, but I present this case based upon, I believe it was you when I explained the whole situation, and you needed an engineer report on this specific matter.
Right.
So that's why I present this matter to you, as it has been engineered.
Right. You're saying that, that both, both entities can't reside in the same space, they don't fit?
It is totally impossible.
Right, so my answer is, then your air conditioning ducts don't fit? That's my answer. So I, not trying to be difficult, I'm just saying this board has granted approvals that have been ignored thus far. You presented why you think where they are is workable. This board still hasn't said yes to that, and we're proceeding on another solution to another problem, and I, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with doing that. So I, I understand that you've engineered it so it'll fit, but I don't, I don't see anything that shows me how the air conditioning units cannot live up, up on that roof. I've heard you say that, and I'm not, I'm not questioning your, how you got to your conclusion, I'm just saying I don't see any dimensions or anything that shows how one could not fit with the other. Because if you take a look at the air conditioning units alone, as they exist on the ground, I can see them fitting up here, but I don't see what the interference is with those units and what you're proposing. I just don't see it. Not that I, that I, that I don't believe it, I just don't see it to either believe it or not believe it. Are you following what I'm saying?
I'm following what you're saying.
Okay, okay.
But my whole concern because of the safety issue and the risk factor with the amount of e that's generated from those units, and like I said before, the roof is a rubber, rubberized roof, and, um, there's e that goes from the back, where the back drop and e that go with exhaust.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, there are certain feet, inches above the floor, and e also goes down.
Mm-hmm.
So I see where it would be a very dangerous thing to use both of them in the same space, and that's why I recommend, uh.
Yeah, I'm not an engineer, but I, but my sense is that what you're saying is something I would conclude without engineering knowledge, so.
We have a vote on it.
But.
Okay, I think we should vote on it, whether it's up or down, that's it.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying we should vote on it.
No, no. Well, I, I feel we've been hashing this over for quite a while. We should really take a vote on whether we're gonna let the guy have it on the ground or let the guy have it upstairs. Uh, there's many times projects around in Yorktown that ask for forgiveness as to a sin, you know that, and we, and we forgive him. So I think as a board, we should vote and just let this guy go ahead, or not go ahead.
So if you would like, we could call a vote. Again, there's four members, um, or, at your request, it could be put off to the next meeting.
I think not to prolong the issue any longer. We've, we've reviewed it several meetings. The owner would like to proceed. In conclusion, whether the, the engineering report and the plan is fully vetted as far as the, the units on their own, as opposed to the units coexisting with a, a new introduced issue of potential restaurant, which may or may not be allowed to happen based on the conclusion of the vote. Uh, looking at the site overall, I'll just, one last time, say that I think that the owner has put forth best efforts to try to produce a very nicely composed project, uh, that the, the units, as they're screened, they're not visible, and while there is a significant amount of fencing on Kear Street that fronts Kear, if we were to take that fence down, move those units to the roof, without performing calculations, I, I think we're talking about a net reduction of maybe ten percent in fencing. So, uh, I guess, in the owner's interest, we're requesting relief, whether the board grants it or not, that the hardship that this could create, uh, potentially, I believe, in our opinion, would outweigh the positive impact of the aesthetic improvement that it would make to take those units and bring them back up, but I'll, I'll leave that in the board's hands to make a decision.
If we was split, what happens?
Doesn't pass.
Okay. Um. This board has been put in a bad position. This was not our doing, this is something that took place in the field. Uh, we've now been asked to allow the units that were shown in the green area to remain. I've been to the site three or four different times with the architect and the owner, and at certain times with the board. I've also driven by it multiple times. I have to say, you did a beautiful job with the building.
Thank you.
I think the screening of the units, even though they weren't permitted, does look nice. I would rather see any equipment for the restaurant housed in there. I do agree with my leading board member that it looks like there is still room in there. Uh, again, we'll yield to, I will yield to the engineer's expertise, um, but at this point, I guess we'll, do I have a motion to open to a special session?
Motion.
I have a second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's a favor.
Aye.
Aye. So in reference to the Nantucket Sound Sons LLC, to le, uh, to take a vote to leave the equipment where it is, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it for the purpose of, of the vote.
The vote.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do a roll call.
This is to leave, to allow it, to modify the site plan?
Allow it to stay where it is.
Okay.
I vote nay.
I vote nay.
Vote yes.
I vote yes.
So the split vote?
How about John, can we vote? Get you to vote, come on, give us some lead.
So the equipment will have to be moved.
I understand.
Okay.
On other decisions, does a vote need to be taken for the purpose of the, the revised details that were submitted for the, the dumpster enclosure and the other items that we've discussed to date? I don't know if we've officially voted on that.
Motion doesn't carry.
Correct.
Or, yeah, doesn't, doesn't matter.
I thought we had given you approval on those previously. That was, that was my...
Verbally, yes, I don't know if it officially has to be voted on.
For me, this was the only outstanding issue, other than the new duct work, which we were talking about. So I thought everything else, other than the offsite improvements, which I thought we had to discuss, I don't know, tonight or whenever.
I thought that was taken care of.
Fire, and it was allowed to proceed.
Okay, if it is, then, great.
No, I mean, we have to establish a bond, I, I guess?
You have to establish a bond for the mitigation.
Right.
Cannot be done now until next season, in other words, after January, February.
Oh, so it's gotta wait till next spring?
Yes.
Right, so it'll allow you to go ahead, that has, that base has to get covered through a bond?
Correct, we'd have to work with the planning department to try to establish an appropriate bond to put in place.
Right, but this board has to grant you that approval of, of whatever the...
Understood, to allow that to transpire.
All right, so who sets that, you, are you gonna set that and bring it back to us, or?
Well, I, I think at this point, we should probably get the, um, estimate of the work, so you can set the bond, so, we're just gonna have to wait another couple of weeks.
Makes sense as a next step.
Okay.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to close the special session?
Motion.
Second.
All's a favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
See, I remembered to close.
Yeah, he remembered. What's this, this is an old one.
All right, next, number ten, we have, uh, Brahtash, approved subdivision, discussion of the site plan, locations five twenty Vine Road.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Joe.
What's up, Joe?
So this is a development of a lot that was created as part of a two lot subdivision that was, um, approved and filed, a map filed in two thousand twelve. Uh, it's located at four eighty-five Vine Road. At this point, the property owner is looking to construct the first residence on the property.
Geez, it's ten years.
God, it goes by quick.
This is easy.
Hmm? Yeah, I remember.
Yeah. With memory. So the home is gonna be a ranch style home, uh, one level, uh, it's gonna have a full basement foundation. There's currently an existing residence on the, on, on the property, and yet the applicant is looking to, um, keep that in play until the house is complete. His, uh, his daughter and daughter-in-law live in that house, and they'll be moving into the new house. So we have health department approval on this, uh, stormwater permit was originally issued on the subdivision, and that has since expired because of the time that's lapsed. So we're here for renewal of the, uh, stormwater permit and, um, any other, if you have anything else you would like to know about this site plan, we can offer that information also.
You know, anything change?
Uh, not, not really, the house is essentially the same location, septic is in the same location, the stormwater is exactly the same.
Everything that was approved is still contemplated by your going forward now, you just need a reapproval, um, reviewed because it expired, is that it?
Right, so the, the, uh, the, um, wetland, the original, um, stormwater permit, at this point, is expired, yeah.
So what steps we have to take here?
You just have to renew the stormwater permit? No?
Does, uh, Dan have to weigh in on it?
Your, the resolution, uh, Robin just corrected me, uh, requires that each individual site you approve, so...
Okay. Does this need to go out for, uh, to, uh, engineering? I mean, I don't know what else we would be looking at that's different.
I don't think there's any significant changes that require any new engineering review, is, is that correct, Joe?
That's correct, but, but, but we did submit it to engineering anyway, so they have, okay, they have seen, yeah.
All right, so do we have to do that in the regular portion of the meeting, or is there anything we have to wait for, you know?
I don't think you have to wait, uh, you know, there's, there's really nothing different in what's showing up here, uh, from the original approval, so therefore, there's nothing...
So we just reapprove the stormwater permit?
You're appro, reapproving the stormwater and approving this particular site plan, which is really nearly exactly like what the approval was, so the, the site conditions didn't really warrant any additional design changes.
So do I go to a special session, take a vote?
Yeah.
And are we voting just on the stormwater, or do I reread the resolution?
No, the stormwater and the, and accepting the site plan.
Okay.
For this lot.
Motion for the third time to go into special session.
Don't move.
I'm not seconding it.
Second.
All's a favor.
Aye.
Do we have a motion reapproving the, uh, stormwater permit and the site plan?
Motion.
Second.
All's a favor.
Aye.
I have a motion to close the special session.
Don't move.
I'm not gonna do it.
Second.
All's a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thanks very much.
Take care.
Well, a little bit of story about this, my, my daughters, when I purchased the property, I did subdivision and had two daughters, and each one would get a piece of property. Well, time went past ten years, eleven years, and I had one daughter had a baby, s, four months ago.
Congratulations.
And the other daughter got married last month.
Congratulations.
So the reality is, it comes twelve years, you said it comes fast.
There you go.
But I think next time, though, can I go through renewal each year rather than keep pushing this off like this, is it easier that way?
Probably easier, yes.
Yeah. My engineer never told me that.
See that, you're gonna watch him.
Thank you all so much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, number eleven, we have the Ryder subdivision, this is a discussion of a minor subdivision, locations five three two Undehill Avenue.
Okay, uh, when we were last before you, we, uh, it was more or less an update as to where we were with this, um, we had gotten health department approval. Uh, we prepared a SWIP, uh, which was submitted a couple of months back, and we had some tidying up to do, uh, with the mitigation plan, which that was done. And the, we had a plat prepared for the proposed subdivision, so at this point, um, we feel we're ready to proceed. Uh, we haven't had, we've had a P I H at this point, but not a public hearing on this.
So we're looking to set up the public hearing?
Yeah, that, that'd be my, uh...
Any issues?
No. I don't see any.
Fail any of them, no, you won't be here?
No, remotely.
All right, so we'll set up a public hearing then. So you work with Robin, John, any issues?
No issues at this time.
Counselor? Okay, we'll set that up.
Okay, thank you.
Now, twelve?
Yep. Okay, next, number twelve, the Griage subdivision, this is a discussion of a major subdivision, locations three three one nine Stony Street.
So last time we were before you, we, uh, had a public hearing, which, uh, which was closed. Uh, subsequently, we received a memo from the planning department, which we have responded to, some of the highlights, um, to the changes that, that have taken place on the plan. These, we've officially designated this, uh, conservation parcel as a separate lot, and we're proposing for it to be part of the HOA, create an HOA for, uh, for ownership and maintenance of it. We created a more physical barrier between lot one and the conservation area, which would be a stone wall, but, uh, there's partial stone wall there, so it would be a, um, continuation of that all along that property line. In this corner here, if you recall the last time, let me just get to that. Back in this corner here, where it joins up to High Point Drive, there's an existing catch basin in there, and that catch basin discharges directly to the north. That water follows this, this channel and goes down Schofield, directly down Schofield Road. What we've done is, um, we're punching through into that catch basin with an additional pipe, uh, which will divert some of that water and feed and, and, and provide additional hydrology to the, uh, created wetland that, that's gonna be within the conservation lot. That, uh, that discharge will be spread throughout, uh, ba, with the grading that we're proposing, that Steve Marino has proposed as part of his mitigation, so that we can get a good, even distribution of, of water through the, uh, through the wetland area. These two homes, we've, uh, we've pulled these two homes a, a little bit more forward, I'm sorry, uh, these two homes here, uh, lots three and four, we've pulled them a little more forward to give them a more substantial backyard. Uh, there was a, a concern about this stormwater retention, so this, this, this system here is an infiltration system, that's for the water quality portion of the stormwater discharge, and this is a detention system for attenuation of the upper storm events. And, uh, because of the, the topography there, it's dropping off, it was kind of a deep cut to put that in, so what we've done is stepped the whole system, so it will follow the grade, so it's gonna be segmented into, uh, different pieces and fa, as I said, stop, step to follow the grade there. I think those are the hu, the highlights of the, of the major changes that we made, uh, you know, as I said, we addressed the comments, if you'd like, if you wanna go through them one by one, I'd be glad to do that. Uh, we also submitted a subdivision plat.
I know the two biggest concerns we heard from the public when this was up was drainage and traffic.
Right.
Joe, I have a question about, uh, what is now, lot eleven is the conservation area?
Correct.
Is there gonna be, um, an easement, what kind of protection are you envisioning to make sure that that land is protected?
Well, it's gonna be an independent lot, and we're gonna have to create homeowners association, and each, each property owner will be responsible for sharing the cost, uh, of, of the maintenance of that, or any, any need to make any repairs or, um, restorations that maybe, that may come up.
Are you putting an easement, conservation easement on that parcel, on that lot?
Yeah, it's gonna be in conservation, yeah.
Who's gonna hold it?
The, the homeowners association.
You're right.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the town, we're, 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 we're not, we're not, uh, transferring any responsibility to the town for the maintenance of that.
Anybody else, okay, 'cause I noticed just to the, I guess west, there's a couple of conservation easements noted that are already in existence, so I was just wondering what you were planning to do with that.
Joe, the, the, the property you were just describing at Schofield Road and Stony Street, uh, for the stormwater detention area, um, what, what ownership of that property, who will hold?
That will also be, that's going to be within an easement, it's, it's, it's here on, it's shown on the plat, um, but it will be within an easement that the HOA will be responsible for.
Okay.
Any other concerns at this point? Where are our next steps, Joe?
This is the latest mitigation plan, um, which Steve Marino has prepared.
And is a management plan for that, that the HOA has?
I'm not sure if there's a management plan in place yet, but we, we, we could certainly put that together. I can't read, I can't read those notes right now, they're a little small, but, uh, that, that might, that might include that in there.
All right, Joe, what's next?
I think that I would like the opportunity to go through the response memo.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so have you done, have we done the public hearing on this?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, okay, so I'd like to do that, and then, uh, we can come back on, uh, in September with, uh, a draft resolution, hopefully. In the meantime, I hope, you know, we can just get closure on a couple of the items that are still not co, completely clear in my mind, so I'd like to do that.
We, if we could also get the management plan?
Yeah, it's, it, it is on, on the, it's right there up on the screen, it is on the mitigation plan.
I have glasses on, I still can't read it. All right, was that signed off by the, uh, conservation board, I'm sure the wetland parcel was, but, all right, we just gotta cross our Ts and dot our Is at this point.
Yeah, I think there is a memo from the conservation board, but it...
Let's make sure.
So much time has gone by, I'm not...
It's been a minute.
Yeah.
All right, so meet with John, Dan, and just work through the, the details.
Okay.
Right?
Terrific, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
All right.
All right, once Joe wraps up, number thirteen, Jacob Road Solar, this is a discussion of site plan and special use permit, locations eighteen oh five Jacob Road.
Good?
How are you?
Good, good to see you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Cooper, partner with the law firm of Zarin and Steymetz, here representing Free Stone Renewables, the, uh, contract leasing to lease a fifteen acre portion of the property, uh, known as Featherbird Properties. Um, we are here processing a site plan and special permit application in conjunction with a proposal to develop a, uh, a three point one two five megawatt, uh, solar energy facility. Uh, here tonight to continue the public review. With me is Ryan Hutchinson from Free Stone Renewables, Nicholas Bombas from Lovella, the project engineer, and my colleague Jaclyn Cohen, who you know well by this point. When we were last before your board, uh, you asked us to dig deeper into the visual analyses, uh, with respect to, uh, screening and, um, uh, view, view sheds or viewpoints from, you got it? I'm, 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 I'm teeing Nick up, and I'm hoping he's actually teed up, you good? Okay. From various viewpoints from a, around the site. So what we've done is, and, uh, we've provided a pretty robust, uh, visual, uh, i- impact analysis as well as simulations. We're not gonna go through each, each view shed, there are about eighteen different view sheds that we've, we've selected along the way, um, but what we wanna do is just take you through a couple and, and kind of a step by step, so you understand kind of a primer as to how, what we're trying to show. Before we do that, let me just step back and, and, uh, just clarify, or, or... Before we do that, let me just step back and just clarify, or state for the record that we've also updated the landscape plan, and that's before you, which is really where the analysis kind of starts. So, the applicant is proposing to plant a double perimeter row of evergreens around the entirety of the solar array. That's over 700 trees when it's all added up and put together. That would be directly adjacent to the solar array, delivered probably at about 8 to 10 foot height, and then obviously growing much higher as the trees mature. What we then did was, from the property line, which is where the board asked us to start taking these photos, we took photos of the existing conditions from 18, as I said, 18 different locations, and Nick will take you through where the locations are, but they're at the edge of the property looking back towards the solar array. So, as you will recall, there is an 80-foot land, or 80-foot undisturbed buffer around the property, so you'll be looking at the buffer, and then beyond that, the landscaping plan, which then behind that would be the arrays. The photo simulations of what you're looking at would be first, is going to be the existing conditions, and then where visible the, where the array would be, but really, as we'll show you, you're just going to see the landscape plans of the trees. Nick will also take you through the cross-sections that we did prepare to show you the topography and how the topography would interact with visuals, with somebody looking at a line of sight. All this is to show that what we believe is that when you take the 80-foot buffer and you also include the new landscape plan and the perimeter around the rays, that the rays themselves would be fully screened. With that said, let me turn over to Nick to take you through, we've selected four, we're happy to go through more if you would like, but we think, what we try to do is select from each angle, including some of the angles where people have already discussed and raised concern, so let me turn over to Nick.
Before you go to that, I have a question. Right now, we're operating, your application is being processed under the moratorium.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
That the Town Board enacted on the solar law, and you're doing that with full realization that things may change as they progress. And so I'd like to ask our liaison, where, if anything, are you on the revisions, what possible revisions? Have there any, are you coalescing around anything in particular?
We're just talking about, nothing has, nothing has... Nothing has changed on the moratorium, but we are talking about it.
As far as the substance of any modifications to the law, is there any discussions about anything?
We're just discussing the details on the moratorium, AKA meaning what a buffer should be, because what it was before and what we're trying to enact is something, you know, it was like, it used to be like, what, 10, 20 feet? Now, we've come to realization, as some of these have come up, that, you know, what the demands are on that.
Any numbers?
No.
Not yet.
What we're hoping, what we're hoping actually even tonight, because we hope that the visual analysis will help, is to start informing what a good buffer would be. In other words, is, you know, 20 feet versus 80 feet versus other numbers that they may be discussing. Obviously, it's a balance, because if you go too far of a buffer, then the, you know, it's not financially feasible to, because you're not going to find any lot that has enough acreage when you take away, you know, say 200 feet, right? It's going to be too much of a buffer, so it makes these projects financially unfeasible. What we do believe, though, is that when you'll see with the 80-foot buffer plus the landscaping plan, that is a significant buffer, so let us get to the...
So what's the current requirement that you understand right now requires what?
I don't know if there's an actual requirement, other than there's a, I think, 100-foot setback, but the buffer itself, I don't think there is. We originally proposed a 20-foot buffer, if you recall.
Right.
And then went to 80 feet, once there was a pushback or request to extend.
Okay.
I think the definition that we've been struggling with here is the, you know, basically, from a residential zone, it's supposed to be basically invisible, fully screened.
Right.
I think that's been...
That's the standard.
One of the struggles.
Right, okay.
But again, like Aaron said, this is kind of in a holding pattern until...
Right, and we're fully, as you know, we've said at the last meeting, we're fully aware that those are moratoriums.
I'm sure you've attended the Town Board meetings to keep...
Yes, yes.
All right, so...
So let me turn over to Nick to start going through.
Thank you, David, and good evening, everybody. Nice to see you again. So, like David was saying, to address the comments that we had the last time we were before the board, what you were saying was, you wanted a wall of green, right? That was the terminology you'd used. So what we're proposing now, it's kind of hard to see at scale, but when you zoom in, you can see, we are packing together trees as tightly as we can possibly hope to get them. These would be a variety of arborvitae that I'm told are less deer, less likely to become deer food, according to our landscape architects. And in front of that would go a series of pines, essentially. So the idea is that the arborvitae is providing day-one screening, your green wall that you're looking for, and then over time, the pines, which as David was saying, you know, 8 to 10-foot planted height, they grow fairly quickly, so over the first few years, you know, we expect them to shoot up, you know, 5 to 10 feet in the first five years, so that they get, they'll eventually overtake the arborvitae and provide this visual barrier that we're looking for. To clarify, we're doing this solely on our neighboring residential properties, because that is where we were told we would have the largest visual impact. Along the eastern side, where we have a much larger buffer that's going to remain in place, and we're bordering the nature preserve, we're going to leave the vegetation, the proposed vegetation that we had originally here, just the double row of pines, so that's not quite as dense as we would have where we're adjoining our residential neighbors. Any thoughts or comments before we get into the visual simulations? So, to address the comments we had from the last meeting, we sent a photographer back out to the site. We went to every one of the neighboring parcels, backed up to it right on the property line, snapped photos, 18 different photos, and those include from the proposed subdivided lots that are north and east of the site. We selected five of these that are representative of the overall screening of the site to present here tonight, but the packets that we did send include the simulations from all 18 In addition to the simulations, we will go through these as well. From the five simulations that I'm going to show you here tonight, we cut line-of-sight profiles, and so we'll get into this in a little bit more detail later on, but each one of these sections are represented in profile as well, so we can demonstrate how the vegetation and the topography will help screen the proposed facility. And so these are the profile views. J1 is the extreme southwestern corner. 4 and 8 are along the western and northern boundary, and 13, I'm sorry, 4 and 8 are along the west. 13 is from the north, and then 14 is from the northeast, from the proposed subdivision.
Go back one slide, just to show, so they can see where all those Js are, or, sorry, two slides.
Yep, yep. So, we're going to look more closely at J1, J4, J8, J13, and then J14. The reason being that 14 is the closest to the proposed panels. By the time you get up here, there's nothing but trees in the way, really nothing to show you. So, one more note before we get into the simulations. Where there may be visibility of our proposed landscaping, we actually did simulate the view where you will see the proposed trees that we intend to plant. For many of these views, there was almost nothing to simulate, because there's significant substantial, significant vegetation to remain, such that the proposed image would show nothing, no change essentially, except for potentially the loss of trees. So where we do have no visibility whatsoever of even the landscaping, we provided essentially just a silhouette to show kind of where it would look if, God forbid, summer were to come and clear-cut all the trees that we planned to leave in place. So this is from...
Blow up the, some of the profiles.
Yeah, actually, what we're going to do is, we're going to go through one by one, and we'll look at the profiles a little more closely after that. Okay.
Excuse me, can I just ask you, what was the height above the ground that the photos were all referenced?
They're all about six feet high.
So, as if you were taking a picture standing?
Correct.
Okay.
Nick, what's the first one you're going to go to?
This is 14. This is from the north and east of the array. So this was the existing condition, and in the proposed, there's a significant amount of vegetation to remain, so there will be no visibility. We don't expect there to be any visibility of the array itself. And as you can see, you know, what you're going to see first would be any of the proposed trees. Yeah, actually, just to help you guys out a little bit with the printed set, we're kind of working backwards, so we're going to kind of start at the end of the pack and then work towards the front. We also, with the simulations, we put in the distance to the panels and the distance to the screening, just to kind of give you a sense of scale, because it's kind of hard to tell from the two-dimensional view, just how far we are from everything.
Excuse me, just a minute.
Yes.
The overlay that you show on the photograph, I know you haven't gotten through it yet, but you're showing the...
Right up there.
Yeah, there you go. The horizontal line is the line of the panels, and the vertical sections that are of the same color, if you will, that's the planting proposed in front of them?
So here's the planting proposed in front.
Right.
Unfortunately, some of this is actually a bit of a remnant from when we export the model from our three-dimensional drafting into two-dimensional space. It does capture a little bit of the ground that we're, that we're actually kind of flattening there.
What am I looking at?
Yeah.
So what are we looking at, then?
Yeah, if you just, if you go to the topography, you'll see why it looks like this from this, from J, what is this J?
14.
J14.
Yeah.
As we get closer to the array, you'll actually be able to see them, but just go to the topography.
So, we have the photo here on the right-hand side, and so you can see, there's a bit of ground here, and this is actually what that, what we're seeing in that image. Again, this is just a, unfortunately, a trick of the program that we're using, where it's actually picking up some of this ground here in front of the panels.
But in the profile, you're shooting from the right to the left?
From the right to the left, yes. So, so, yes, so...
So what's at 600? Those trees are staying?
These trees are staying, yes.
And what's at 500, the small ones?
These are the proposed trees, so we're showing here, you know, year 1, year 5, and the year 15 expected growth.
So the point of this one is that you've got mature trees that don't have any, nothing low, and so you're proposing to plant new stuff to block the view from underneath?
This is just, this is just a graphical representation. We do say vegetation density may vary. There is significant undergrowth here that you can see actually in the photos that we took. We're not able to really represent the, you know, every single plant that's on the ground here existing, but the idea is that, yes, we are leaving a significant amount of vegetation in place, and we're planting new trees. And, you know, from this view, we're, you know, nearly 300 feet from the panels.
So your dashed line is the line of sight?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, and that's being intercepted here.
So let's just say that there wasn't anything between you and your planted landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
The landscaping, even in year 1, provided it's dense enough, would fully screen this array from that vantage point. Is that what you're saying?
That's, yes, that's what we're saying, yes, yes. But we don't want to lose sight of the fact that there is going to be vegetation to remain.
No pun intended.
Very clever, John, very clever. And so moving along, this is view 13. This is just a little north of the panels. This is from one of the, this is, we're out of the subdivision now, this is one of our existing neighboring properties. Please ignore the plastic bag that fortunately blew. Yeah, we picked it up, yeah. So here's the existing, due to the location, the proximity to the panels, there will be some visibility of the trees coming down, which you can see kind of in the before and after. But what you'll also notice is that even with the trees coming down, all you're going to see here is the vegetation that we're proposing. You know, we're about 140 feet to those new trees, and about 190 feet to the panels behind. But again, even with the loss of vegetation, we're fully screened from this vantage point. And so in the, in the profile view here, again, you can see 6-foot eye height. There, in the photo, you saw it wasn't very dense underneath the trees, underneath the existing trees, but with the existing vegetation, we're completely screening the view of the Moving right along, this is J8. This was from the end of this cul-de-sac, right up against the property line. So here's the existing view and the proposed. Again, you do see a loss of vegetation, but with the 80-foot buffer that we're leaving in place, and the proposed trees behind, we are fully screened. We have about 135 feet to the proposed vegetation and 157 feet or so to the panels from this view. But again, we have dense existing vegetation and the proposed trees behind it. And so again, in looking at the section here, 6-foot eye height at the property line, vegetation to remain, and our proposed, proposed screening, kind of backing that up.
Now, if you drew a line-of-sight line from the viewer to the highest panel, which is either that one or the one... which is either that one or the one previous to that, probably that one. Okay. Now let's see how tall you need your landscaping to be.
In that case, we would probably need to get to about 12 feet or so.
So within a year, you'd say that that would reach that point? You're going to plant between eight and 10?
Well, again, this is, yeah, we're, we're at eight to 10 planted height and this is the planted height and we're still not, at least in the representation here, there is no visibility even above the, above the, the proposed trees. So, it, it gets a little tricky with the way these things print. You know, the, the line thickness can, can make it look, you know, a little... It, it's hard, it's hard to, it's hard to equate this to true to life, right? This, the, the best we can do is, is in something like this and...
But the line of sight does give, give you an idea of the height that you need. It can establish the height that you need in order to fully screen everything as it moves up the hill.
That's correct.
I think it's valuable in that and that, that tells me that you need to get to about 12 feet roughly, give or take, in order to fully, fully screen it from that vantage point, at six feet at the property line.
Okay.
Depending, right, depending, give, give or take, there's a margin of error, but yes.
Yeah. Yep. All right, now we're moving down to J4, which was at the end of this cul-de-sac here. So, again, existing and proposed. What we're seeing here is that, and actually I should back up and explain. When we took the photos, but before we went out to take the photos, we had a, a surveyor come out and actually flag our limited disturbance. So we're able to accurately depict where trees are coming down. And from this photo, we were unable to see any of the flagging that was hung. So from here, we wouldn't expect that you'd be able to even see a, a loss of vegetation. So from here, what we're showing is again, this, this silhouette of the trees and the, and the panels behind. The trees are actually higher than the, the panels would be about this, this elevation. But, but yes, from here, even without the existing vegetation in place, all you're gonna see is the proposed screening.
Can you show the line of sight diagram?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. So again, six foot eye height at the property line. We're kind of looking down from this vantage point, but with the tree line, the proposed tree line that we have, we're obscuring the, the view. And if you wanted to do your, your trick again here, John, you can see, you know, we're more or less gonna be completely covered on, on day one. And then the last one we're presenting here tonight, J1. Again, this is that extreme southwest, existing and proposed. Again, the, the vegetation in there is so dense that there's, we're, we're not expecting to see any, any removal of vegetation. So we're showing again, just the silhouette behind everything. So then, in looking at the line of sight, even to the highest panel, those, the initial planting height should do enough to cover the, to, to eliminate that, that view even without the, the existing vegetation to remain. And that was, that was everything we had tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
So I, I think the presentation was very good. However, I saw two panels, J8 and J4, where I think you're gonna have to tweak it a little bit as per when John asked for the line of sight from the person to the tree. I think, and I think it could be done, but I think it's gotta be tweaked. And I think our biggest charge here, as of right now, until the town board makes any kind of decision on what they're doing with the moratorium, is to make this go away. And I think at this point, you've shown that you can do that. Again, with some tweaking. Does the board have any concerns or questions at this point past that?
No.
So John, what, what do we do from here?
Well, I'd like to go over the site sections in more detail.
Okay.
I mean, you know, once we do that and maybe even have a meeting with the applicant to just make sure we're all clear on what is being presented, you know, you can come back and discuss that. But there's still some stormwater to go through.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, start adding some of the details that need to be added if they care to move in that direction.
Do we ever get a tree cut from it on this?
We can't do anything at this point because it's the moratorium.
Right, that's what I'm saying, did we ever get an estimate on how many trees are gonna cut?
I think there was some...
Yeah, there's...
In this week's submission.
How many?
There's a, there's a tree cutting plan, tree planting plan.
How many trees gonna be removed?
He's asking how many trees?
Yeah.
It was, it was around 1,100, yeah.
1,141, 1,141.
Okay.
So it's 1,144 removed, about 750 planted, so there's a deficit of about four, what was it, four? 400.
Over how many acres?
15? 20 acres? 24, 24 acres total.
Okay.
And there's also in the, the analysis, a carbon sequestration study which demonstrates that the, the amount of carbon that's actually gonna be taken out of the atmosphere as a result of the, the solar, the solar panel being introduced is significantly more than what would be taken out of the air by those 400 or so trees.
Thank you. You know, from a public utility perspective, the state is pushing, you know, fully electric in, was it 2032?
Something like that.
2032. And Con Ed is not putting in any new infrastructure and I hadn't heard of any plants or anything getting done. So they're really looking to offset that with the solar and the wind. And fortunate that, you know, you do have to take trees down to get enough electric to now power these cars and everything else. I understand there's a big push right now about the ground mounted solar compared to roof mounted that we've seen and parking lots like IBM did. There's various ways to get to that, but at this point, from what we're given to review and the current code, it looks like they're making headway to get it to a place where we won't be able to see it. I think that's one of the biggest charges we have at this point. So what I would suggest is, especially with those two panels, four and eight, I think you're gonna have to alter the height of those trees because as John very clearly pointed out from the line of sight, right now it looks like you'd still be able to see some. And again, right now, the code reads to basically be fully screened. And that's been up for debate with other applications. If that's gonna change, I'm not aware, but again, I know you guys are closely watching those have more meetings. So in the meantime, if it's your wish, I would make sure you sit down with John and Dan Ciarcea.
Yeah, that, that's where we, we're gonna take John up on, on his invite to, to meet in person or, or over Zoom. I, I said in person, I don't know if you were actually invited in person, but to meet with John.
I'm not sure what I said, but I guess. It's called an audience.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna regret I said that, but, but yeah, we'd like to take him up on, on that invite.
All right, so again, you know, we look forward to seeing the tweaks that you make and the adjustments, but keep working with them and then we'll just wait to see what happens with the moratorium.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Robin, do you wanna talk about that?
These still? This was for the...
Any interest in doing the, getting the info hearing out of the way?
Can we do that?
Under the moratorium? I mean, we'll, we'll make sure that we can, but if you wanna set it up potentially... Do you wanna do it? If you wanna wait.
Perhaps we'll meet with you first to identify the tweaks and then...
Take care. That's the, the dog, the, uh, same eye.
Okay.
I didn't get that. Or maybe I did, I don't know.
Okay. Next, we have a town board referral. This is AMS LLC, location's 800 East Main Street, Jefferson Valley. How are you?
Good, good evening, chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Janet Kerasima, partner with Del Bello, Danilin, Weingarten, Weizen, Whitaker. It's been a little while since we've been before you on this application, but we have been here a couple of times. And just to refresh your recollection, back in October of 2022, on behalf of the applicant, we filed a petition with the town board for some modifications to the zoning ordinance which would affect the property that is currently known as contractors registered at 800 East Main Street. We filed a petition seeking rezoning of that property from its current designation of OB to RSP2 to allow the develop, redevelopment of that property with an age restricted multifamily development. Since the time we filed the petition with the town board, and I think we were before you at that time, the town board issued a positive declaration. They're the lead agency for environmental review under SECR. They issued a pause deck. Subsequently, they approved a scope of work. We worked on a DEIS in response to that scope of work. That DEIS was accepted by the town board as complete and adequate for public review back in July. So we're here before you this evening. The town board has scheduled a public hearing on that DEIS for September 3rd. In advance of that meeting, we're here to present to you what was in that DEIS and to get some feedback from this board as, as, as an involved agency. So we have our, our entire team here this evening. Ryan Sutherland, who is with the applicant AMS, Peter Faro of AKRF, the project planner and the principal author of the DEIS, Joe Rena, who is the project engineer, and Stuart Laxer Perkins Eastman, who is the project architect. So I know the hour is late and you've been very patient with everybody this evening. And so I'd like to just introduce Peter, who will, who's prepared a very nice presentation to just go over the, the details of the project with you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Peter Faro with AKRF, happy to be here tonight. I think we, most of us know where the project site is. It's about 35 and a half acres north of Route 6 and east of the Teconic. A little bit closer, currently about 10.7 acres or so of the site is disturbed with the current, the current development. There are two vacant three story office buildings, approximately 63,000 square feet of office space. Interestingly enough, right, the site, for those of you who know it, that developed portion of the site is about 100 feet higher than Route 6 in front of it, really kind of putting it up on the hill and I'll, we'll go into that a little bit more. As Janet said, the proposed project is an age restricted residential community. We're proposing 250 units. 200 of them would be for rent, 50 for sale. There'd be one and two bedroom units, only varying types of buildings, up to four stories. To accomplish this, we require a change to the zoning, both to remap the site from OB to RSP2 in existing zone within the town and also a text amendment to permit greater density and height on RSP2 sites greater than 25 acres. So if you have a large RSP2 site, you know, allowing some more flexibility to really design it in such a way, to kind of reduce the visual impacts. And then the third component of the project, which we'll get into, is to improve the intersection of Route 6 and East Main Street and we'll get into that as well. This is the site plan. The access drive is to the right of the screen. North is facing left. You come up the existing access drive, which would remain in the same place and the site would be redeveloped. The clubhouse would be in the middle in that, I don't know what color that is, pink, purple? Not good with colors, in the middle. The rest would be residential housing and you see the amenities for the site would be mostly in the screen top, so the eastern portion of the site. There'd be walking trails, tennis courts, pickleball, et cetera, as well as a new pond that would be a kind of a water feature within the site. And this is a, a high level rendering of what that site could look like in the future. So this is kind of from the, from the south looking north. Janet went through the process to get us to where we are tonight, which is to receive public comments on the DEIS and the zoning. Just a reminder of where we're going after this, which is that once all public comments are received, the applicant and the town would prepare a final environmental impact statement, or FEIS, and it would have written responses to all substantive comments from your board, the town board, and the public. Once that FEIS is completed, the town board would be in a position to issue what's called a finding statement and that's where they summarize the environmental impacts and the mitigations associated with the project and basically set forth their rationale for the decision. Once that finding statement is adopted, the SECR process, the environmental review process is concluded and the town board can take action on the zoning. And if, if they approve the zoning, ultimately get into a site planning process. So the DEIS contents are pretty long and involved, for those of you who have the book, I'm sorry. But these are all the chapters. I'm gonna go through a couple of the highlights of them. Happy to answer questions, but really just wanted to go through a couple of highlights. First and foremost is kind of why this project, right? It's, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan in the town. We know that the demand for professional offices peaked in the 80s, especially campus office parks have been struggling. While the 2010 comprehensive plan recommended continuing promoting office development near the Teconic, it's clear the market has changed dramatically. So we looked elsewhere in the comprehensive plan and what else did the comprehensive plan say? And it said, you know what, we also need housing and we need different types of housing in this community. The demand for housing remains strong, especially for housing other than single family detached and to really balance future development with open space and natural resources. So we took those elements of the comprehensive plan, excuse me, and developed the proposed project. We're gonna get into the visual character. We have a whole chapter on the visual character of the site and photo simulations of the site. This is a topographic map with the reds and yellow, the reds being the highest elevations and the greens being the lowest. And what this really shows again is that that developed portion of the site sits about 100 feet higher than Route 6. It sits, it, the site slopes down towards the Teconic only a little bit compared to when it eventually gets to the Teconic, another 40 feet down from the property line. So you're really kind of isolated when you get up there, especially with the vegetative cover. Well, what does that look like in real life? It looks like this, right? This is a shot southeast. The project, the Teconic's obviously in the foreground. South is to the right. And you see the site in the foreground, that developed portion kind of secluded within that tree area. You see Route 6 continuing up the page with the mall in the kind of top center of that picture. And again, I really think it's important to talk about the, the character of the site and kind of how it sits. So what would the new project look like? We took photo simulations from seven different vantage points and really the project buildings are relatively obscured. Portion, a portion of the roof of one of the buildings might be visible just at or above the tree line when you're on the Teconic heading northbound. We'll get into that, it's a little bit hard to see. When you're going southbound, if you stop looking at where you're going and turn your head the other way, you will see the, or pull off on the side of the road like I did, you will see the buildings through the trees when the leaves are off. When the leaves are on, you won't see them at all. So what did that look like? We have photo simulations from seven different vantage points. This is from the Teconic, south of the site, south of Route 6, looking north. You can see the existing condition in the top right. The bottom left, there's a white dashed line representing the outline of the roof of the closest buildings. And on the right, you would see the buildings. And if you look really closely, you can... And on the right, you would see the buildings. And if you look really closely, you can maybe see a roof, a dark roof on top of the dark trees. From southbound, this is what it would look like. Again, you could see the buildings through the trees. You can see the existing building, just the, the northern building through the trees currently. This would be a little more, a little bit more prominent. They'd be a little closer to the Teconic. But again, you'd have to be looking the wrong way. Plenty more visual simulations in the EIS, but I don't wanna go through them all tonight. So there are no regulated wetlands or floodplains on the site, when we get back to natural resources. About ten point seven acres of the site's previously disturbed. The proposed project would include the redisturbance of those ten point seven acres, plus another about nine and a half acres. The impervious coverage of the site would increase to about nine point three acres from five point two. And it would require the removal of approximately thirteen hundred twenty town-regulated trees. Obviously, there'd be significant mitigation, planting programs and the like. And we, we go through that in the EIS. Stormwater, there's an existing stormwater system on the site that captures the, the water from the currently developed area, travels to the south of the site. The undeveloped area in the north, the wooded area, generally it, the water flows, well, downhill from east to west. We did a preliminary design, we, Joe did a preliminary design for stormwater on the, on the project. It, it captures a lot of the stormwater, but, but we still have some more to go in final engineering. We would have to add some additional underground detention and other elements to make up all of the space needed for the water quality requirement.
I stopped you right there, okay? Couple of places in the report and in the, in the DEIS and in the executive summary, it talks about the impact of what you're discussing right now as forcing a reduction in the density and the number of units of this project. Am I misreading it, or is that the conclusion that's set forth here?
The conclusion is that to make the stormwater work, we'd either need to reduce the density to have more room for the stormwater, or go through quite significant engineering design. Yeah.
So what's the number that you're working with based upon the impact of your handling of the stormwater? Is it still two hundred and fifty units, or is it smaller?
So we've developed an alternative. I think you read my presentation. We developed an alternative that is less dense than two hundred and fifty. That's, it's in the EIS, approximately a hundred and eighty-five units. And we'll get to that. And that has a very different footprint of disturbance, and that does handle all the stormwater very well.
Okay, so then the question becomes, from an environmental review point, I know that this is a rezoning, and it's currently before the town board to consider the impacts of that rezoning. But these rezonings are very intimately tied in with this, with the underlying site plan, which is, belongs to us and not necessarily the town board. So how locked in are we after your environmental review for the rezoning based upon this site plan? Where do we come in later on as a planning board, looking at the same thing?
So I think there are, there are kind of two, two answers to that. One is, obviously, you would come in at site plan, but that's not a satisfactory answer from our perspective, or probably from yours. So the other answer is, is now, actually. So the secret process, as you know, is set up to study alternatives. And the town board asked us to look at several alternatives. When it became clear that the level of disturbance on the site was going to be as extensive as was originally proposed, they said, you, you really need to look at another alternative, which we did. And it also helps a lot with the stormwater. And so the answer is it kind of comes in now. Between the draft environmental impact statement and the final environmental impact statement, and even findings, there's really opportunity to refine the project. And for the town board to kind of weigh in on which alternatives are, are more appropriate for the town and the site, and which ones are less. And I would assume they would take feedback from your board and, and other boards as to what is more appropriate. So that we don't get into a position of having a site plan down the road, that doesn't work. Because that's not in our interest. It's not in your interest, not in the town's interest.
I think another way of saying that is that the rezoning will give you a limit of density, but not a guarantee of that density. The site plan will determine the density that's, will be approved.
Absolutely.
So it will not exceed a number, but it's not gonna guarantee that number.
Exactly. I would, I would think that's a good way of putting it. Yeah. Yeah.
Be clear in that, in your comments to the town board.
Then we should, yeah.
I can insult him before, too.
I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Internal comment.
They're joking with me.
Little bit on socioeconomics and community services. Again, we have several studies in the DEIS. Kind of one of the, the core assumptions, right, is redeveloping a previously developed property is a, is kind of a, a good use of, of land. And obviously, new residents will support the local businesses. And we go in and quantify kind of our estimates of that in the EIS. The site currently generates approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year in property taxes. And that's as a vacant office building. About a hundred and ninety thousand of that goes to the school district, and thirty thousand to the town, and about fourteen and a half to the fire district. When redeveloped, the project is anticipated to generate approximately one point eight two million dollars a year in property taxes. And this is based on working with the town assessor. So it's not a number that we pulled out of thin air. Approximately one point, one and a quarter million dollars is going to go to the school district, an increase of over a million dollars a year with virtually no additional cost to the school district, as this is an age-restricted project. Two hundred thousand would go to the town, and approximately a hundred thousand to the fire district. Traffic and transportation. Again, we have a traffic study in here. We looked at eleven different intersections identified by the town board and the public during the scoping session. There are long, obviously, as you can see, along Route six, along East Main Street, from Barger all the way to Hill. We included four no-build projects in our traffic study. And a no-build project, for those not familiar, right, we take our existing base traffic volumes. We look at other projects that have been approved, or maybe are under construction or being proposed. And we added the traffic from those projects to the existing conditions. And then from that, we put our project traffic on top of it. So our traffic study looks at and includes the, the traffic from these four development projects along East Main Street and Route six, as well as includes what, what's known as background growth, just a percentage growth per year that could happen on the network. So on top of that, we put our project traffic and we analyzed those eleven intersections. The project would generate a, a little more than a hundred peak trips. I'm sorry, a hundred trips per peak hour during the morning and afternoon. A little bit less than the current office building would have generated. So the project would have an impact on the East Main Street-US six intersection if it wasn't mitigated. So we know the intersection doesn't work very well today. It experiences what's called the, in LOS, or Level of Service F today. And it would experience that in the future with or without the proposed project. And if not mitigated, obviously adding our traffic to that intersection would make it worse. We quantify that in the DEIS, but that's the, the kind of nuts and bolts of it. So what are we gonna do about it? Well, as I mentioned, improving that intersection is part of our project. So the mitigation overall would improve that intersection to a Level of Service C, which it's kind of like A through F in school. So it's a pretty decent grade. You, you, you get by. It's a lot better than F. It would eliminate the project impact, and it would also improve it from its current condition. So what is the mitigation? The mitigation is to signalize that intersection. And you would basically signalize it on Route six, and you'd signalize it up at East Main Street. And those two signals would act together. They'd basically be controlled by the same controller so that you, you wouldn't have people backing up on, on Old Route six there. And we would extend the turning lane, the left-hand turning lane into East Main Street there within the existing right-of-way, right? So we'd just kind of extend that turning lane, add some more queuing capacity, signalize it. And what would happen is that intersection would function a lot better than it does today. It would handle our project.
Which one functions better? There's two intersections there.
So the, the one at US six and, the one on Route six would, would operate a lot better. The one, so these names are really confusing me.
All right.
The one at the top.
You've got six. If you go towards your site, that's not East Main Street, right? That's Old Route six in your terminology, I believe?
Yep.
And going to the right down towards the Chico's and all that's East Main Street.
Mm-hmm. So it would improve the, the intersection of Route six. Obviously, there would be traffic that would normally have a, or that has a stop sign today at East Main Street, would have a traffic light. But really, the, the operations would be very similar there. And so what we're doing is improving the safety and the functionality of the intersection at Route six.
What about the other one?
Which one?
East Main Street.
Right above it.
And Old Route six.
Where your driveway comes out.
Yeah.
Well, that one.
Yeah.
What, what's, what would the level of service be for somebody coming out of the Jefferson Valley area trying to make, you know, get on through Route six?
It would be about, it would be about the same. They're, they're measured differently because currently it's unsignalized, and it would be signalized. So the way they measure them and grade them are, are different. But it would be very similar.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's all right.
But I, I, I actually, I mean, I can pull it up and give you the delays, the average delay right now. But they operate at, I wanna say at the Level of Service C, they would, in the future.
But, so just a quick, maybe clarification. So right now, as it operates, if you're coming west on East Main Street from Jefferson Valley, you, you don't have a stop sign or, or a signal there at that intersection. You can, you can come and make the, the turn and get right to the stop bar
Yep.
onto Route six. So that is a significant difference to those travelers, let's say, in AM peak. I think that's kind of where you're going, right?
I got, I see what you're saying.
So there'll be, there, there's a potential for some queuing at the new light
Yes.
for commuters in the morning trying to get to the Teconic Parkway from Points Eastward.
Right. If you travel that road, you got the, the tractor trailers that wait in
Yeah.
the road for Dunkin' Donuts to unload their stuff. That area gets squarely.
It, it does indeed.
What I don't see on here is anything for pedestrian movement. Are you putting in, proposing any sidewalks?
We're not. And, and the reason we're not is because of the grade change. To get up to the site, again, you're, we're climbing about a hundred feet. The slopes on the sidewalk really wouldn't be ADA accessible. And quite frankly, I don't think they'd be used. In addition, once you got down, I mean, our site ends well to the, you know, off the left-hand side of this picture. It, it doesn't connect anything, right? It would, it would have to be a significant extension. And, and quite frankly, we just don't, we don't think people are gonna be walking it.
So anybody who wants to leave the site, let's say, to go to Dunkin' or to Chico's or A and S, they're gonna drive?
They are.
So no one will walk out of there?
Probably not. And I, I think the reality is if we put a sidewalk in, I, I think it would be the same number.
Where's the closest bus stop to this?
Good question. I don't know off the top of my head. I'm happy to look at it. But I wanna say it's, it's at Lee.
JV?
Yeah, they have a bus stop there.
He answered the question.
Okay. Do you have anything else? Cause I have another question.
No, fire away.
So set this, setting the topography of the site aside.
Mm-hmm.
Is this your preferred way of accessing the site, or would there be a better way to come in right where the ramp from the Teconic northbound exit is?
You did look at my presentation. So we looked at that.
So aside from the topography, which I understand is what the problem is, that you got a big elevation change over there, and it makes it difficult to come in, wouldn't that be a better access?
If this were in the middle of Kansas, yeah.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we're not. And so to the left is a section drawn along, what is that red line, that vertical line? If you were to go straight in from the Teconic exit ramps and meet the driveway, you're gonna cut about thirty feet of rock.
What if you went in at an angle?
If we hung out to the right, we're gonna cut about fifteen feet of rock. And even then, when we did that, we would basically be coming out and heading the wrong way. And so we'd have to make some sort of improvement, pretty big improvement to that cul-de-sac to turn people back around and go the right way, right? The way the topography works, we'd end up having to curve back and then go back up. And, and it just, it doesn't work. This is something the town board had asked us as well to look at pretty carefully.
What doesn't work about it?
Go. Basically.
You didn't yell at Joe.
He knows better.
Oz is still back there.
So as you could see, on the left there, we don't even make, we don't even reach grade on that proposal. So you're, you're tunneling at that point. On the right, we do reach grade. That's, that's coming across the orange dotted line going across there, right? And hitting the existing cul-de-sac. So that one we do, but there's a significant amount of cut that has to be done. And, and really, what, what, what is the gain? I, I don't know what the gain would be to access from there where you have a much better route, much better grade at the intersection where we're coming out now.
The question is that the configuration of the existing access with the way East Main Street comes into Route six, and that whole dynamic is, you know, a difficult situation. And while it appears that you're approving, it's still very, I, I think possibly subject to some issues in the queuing on that little piece, that little throat that's, that's there in order to get into your site, which now will have some significant amount of PM peak going into the site probably, now that it's a residence. As a, as an office, PM was coming out of the site. Now, we already know that the, the queuing and the turning movements there, moving eastward is already significant, and it's going to be more significant. I think that's the concern.
Yeah, and I think we, we can definitely drill down into that more and get, and look at that queuing more. And I'm happy to get those, those answers.
So is there, is there, have you done subsurface explorations there? Is, is it rock, or, or is it, do you know what it is?
Rock. I mean, I can, right, I can see it.
Yeah, no, 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 we haven't. But there is obvious visual, uh, uh, surface evidence of rock. Yeah.
Okay.
Joe, Joe, the cut is fifteen feet or so to make that work at a maximum?
If.
Going to the right?
If we were to go right across and go to the right, yeah.
And whose property is that?
I, I would have to say partially it's a DOT property.
And it would, it's also unclear whether DOT would give permission for that at all, to make a driveway kind of, you know, a signalized driveway off that intersection. But the other thing I will mention is, even if we got out on that orange line and got back to that cul-de-sac, we then still have to turn the traffic back around
Right.
and make it so emergency vehicles could use it as well. And right where that cul-de-sac is, you start going back up the hill to the site.
Right.
So it'd be, again, a very significant, very significant project.
But you could take all of your traffic and keep it out of the interference with East Main Street coming to Route six. In other words, you'd, you'd be bringing your traffic out to a signalized intersection on Route six where people could go east or west from your project. And the other traffic would act independently through another signalized intersection.
And, and stop? And so in that scenario, you would give up access to East Main Street completely?
I'm saying possibly. To me, the benefit of doing this is to take your traffic away from that intersection. So that intersection could function on its own with minimal
So, that intersection could function on its own with minimal improvements, just basically signaling it. And then, you're creating a new signalized where it's already, there's already traffic lights at that intersection where you get off the Teconic.
Right.
So, you would have those lights there that just have to be timed to the other, to the new traffic light.
So, I mean, we can ask DOT, we've obviously sent this to DOT, we've heard obviously nothing. But I'll also point out, if we're not driving traffic to that intersection.
Right.
We're not improving it, because we're not making, we're going to have no impact to it.
Well, I think that's what he's saying.
No, no, you were saying signalize that other intersection.
Well, I'm saying you're proposing to signalize it, but I'm saying that you may not even need to if you're taking all of your traffic.
Right, we wouldn't.
You're not impacting it.
But it would, but it would operate as it does today.
I understand.
Which I, which.
Right, it would be on others, it would be on others, you know, to make that improvement, because you're not impacting it. You're bringing it out to a signalized intersection now.
Yeah, if topography was no issue, that would be the preferred way, right, a hundred percent.
I understand.
I, it just, unfortunately, it just doesn't work.
Have you explored anything more than that straight line going to the right to work with the topography to get that road to be less of a cut and more of a?
I can turn that over to Joe, but pretty much, it goes, it kind of goes straight up.
Right.
So, you can't, you've got to get up that hill at some point.
No, I know you have to go through it, but I'm saying to minimize it, have you, have you spent any time to try to minimize the amount of cut and to make it work, or you just took a quick look at it?
I think these were our two best shots at getting up to the.
Okay.
Well, your driveway is already though, that area, it certainly could be an absolute nightmare.
The driveway's at ten percent now.
Yeah.
As it exists.
And what I'm concerned about too is, there's no pedestrian walkway, which, you know, let's say you want to cross the street to the T-bar, maybe you had a few too many drinks.
You're never going to walk home.
I mean, there's no way to get that in there.
Like a pinball game.
Well, again, you could, I'm sure, you've done many a site plan, there's got to be some way to get that in there, even if you've got to meander.
That, that's how it would have to be, would have to be meandering down, basically riding that hillside down. Be quite a walk, probably an extensive walk, I mean, it's not going to be, it's not going to be short.
Again, this is a fifty-five and, what was the community that we're looking for?
You'd have to realign essentially the access road.
We have to redo the access road.
It would probably move towards the right and, you know, begin at the right side of the property and have to come in. So, the existing access road that you're trying to reuse would have to be abandoned and re-realigned.
Maybe a chairlift.
It's something that I think's got to get looked at.
The pedestrian access.
Absolutely, because everything we're pushing now, and being of that age group, you want to walk, you want to get exercise. You've got ClubFit right down the street, which is really within walking distance. You know, it's pulling that component completely away from it, and you know people are going to do it anyway. So, then you're putting them out onto a roadway.
The other concern that I have, just conceptually, is that you're talking about whatever the, the number of units that are going to be there, be it two fifty or one eighty-five or whatever it becomes. I'm concerned that one way in and one way out is not a safe situation, and that a secondary means in or out of the property. I'm not saying a public access, but an emergency access at a minimum is required.
We looked at that, Joe looked at that as well. Again, going out, you'd go out to the east of the site, and it just simply doesn't work. So, what we, what we proposed was to take the existing access drive in the alignment, to widen it slightly, basically up the hill a couple of feet, and what we're able to do is get, was it twenty-six? About twenty, I have, sorry, I've written that, twenty-six feet, and so, we'll have the two lanes in each direction. We'll have the land, a landscaped median, but it'll be.
Sound like a boulevard.
It'll be porous pavement, so that the emergency vehicles can go over it, so that we would have that extra lane to get in.
And that lane will be restricted from day-to-day use?
Yeah, it'll be landscaped, it'll be.
Well, it doesn't mean it won't be restricted, so.
Well, restricted as best we can, yes.
No, but I mean, an emergency lane like that should be, you know, available not to be abused by everyday traffic.
It'll be striped as if that is its own middle lane, that's landscaped, and.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the, that's the improvement, and we have a cross-section in the EIS, I just didn't bring it up.
So, it'll have, it'll have a mountable curb around it, so it's not going to be like.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Joe, can I step back just because, for a minute? We were talking about drainage, and Aaron brought up the density. Have you done testing up there, or are you going to be able to get?
We have done testing up there.
Right.
We've found some, off to the north side of the site, we've found some nice areas for infiltration, really good soils up there, so we're confident, we're more confident in the alternative on being able to accomplish that.
Yeah.
Versus, versus the current plan because of the amount of rock that's up at the south end of the site. But as you get to the back end of the site, rock is less, and there's a lot of good soil depth there. But we have done testing, yes.
Okay, so drainage sounds like you can get to work. Trees is going to be a lot of mitigation, you've got to look at the density. I'm going to say what I said at one of the last projects we got put in front of us. You've got a problem with traffic, right? And we're going to meet our next item on the agenda after this, is discussing the Route six corridor. Moving forward, how we want to start to look at it proactively as a board, because we have all these little projects scattered throughout it. And we want to make sure that we look at it more holistically.
Right.
That area and that intersection, because I'm right down the street, is insane. I won't go that way. I'll go up to the light.
I won't make that left anymore.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's an accident waiting to happen.
I do it every day.
I know, those are the two reactions.
I try anyway.
But whatever we do here, it's got to be improvement on the situation. And again, I think that, as Bob has said, that intersection or intersection needs to be looked at.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's why we want, we want to fix that piece of it. Obviously, we're bringing our traffic through there, but as we said, we looked at the traffic from the other developments.
Yeah, if you're saying that other area is a no-go with New York State and every, for reasons of rock, or whatever it might be, that intersection there and moving up towards.
Yeah.
It's good, it's, it's, that's problematic.
And so, we need to fix it, and that, we, we think we've proposed something that, that works not just for us, but works for the intersection today and the other developments.
Do you have any more details of that?
Yeah.
Right, I, I just picked up the book, so I'm going to be digging into it. I see Aaron's.
And Scott's been looking at it from Transpo, right, and he's been reviewing it the whole time. So, you know, I'm sure he'll have more comments for us as well.
There's a lot of people.
There's a lot of conflicting movements and, and, you know, a lot of different ways you could go, right? I mean, you don't have to make that turn, you could make that turn, how does it really work?
Now, with adding the development up there, I mean, I think that that area is really in for a complete redo. I'll be honest with you. I mean, the light is one thing, but everything else in there, go there on a Saturday, not now.
Not now, I won't go now.
But when school's back in session.
Yeah.
Right, and, you know, you'll see the craziness.
It's crazy, yeah.
No, so, I, I, you know, that, I'm really concerned.
And again, we're happy to be a part of that, and that's why we wanted to do that, right? We're proposing this off our site, on Route six, on East Main Street. Yes, it works for us, but, but we're proposing it kind of on, on the main lines, right? For the better, for everyone, right, for the town, and, and, you know, we're, we're the ones stepping up right now. And happy to be part of the other conversation to make sure that it's working with everyone else, and it takes into account their traffic, and we get it to work right. And if, if, hey, if they want to join in and help, that's great, but I mean, that's what we're, you know, we think that works well. So, I'll just, if I can take five, three more minutes. Alternatives, a big part of Seeker, as we talked about, so we, we looked at a lot of alternatives. So, kind of the no-action alternatives, what if you reoccupy the existing office building? We talked about that. What if you develop the site under its current zoning? You'll see a good site plan of that, including a seven-and-a-half acre parking lot in the northern portion of the site, right? Not, not anything anyone wants to see. It would generate about three times as much traffic as our proposal, if you were to build it out under the current zoning. We looked at the impacts of a non-age-restricted development, same site plan. What if it was non-age-restricted? Obviously, you would have schoolchildren attending, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood. I think we estimate somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-four, forty-five. The taxes would still cover the cost, but obviously, the school district wouldn't see kind of the increase in revenue that it would see with an age-restricted project. And then, again, because the town board really wanted us to look at an alternative layout of the site, we looked at what we're calling an alternative site layout. It's a hundred and eighty-five units that really looks to minimize the impacts to the rest of the site and kind of be a little, a little bit lighter touch. We looked at two variations after that. One, so they'd both be under the existing RSP two, so what if you didn't, we didn't get any extra height? We didn't get any extra density. So, we'd have two variations of that hundred and eighty-five unit plan. One would be a shorter, shorter buildings, right? Basically, instead of four stories, three stories. We'd lose a bunch of units, forty units. The buildings get, you know, exactly the same. We don't generate as much traffic, we actually don't have as much of an impact on the East Main Street intersection. If we were to keep a hundred and eighty-five units at three stories, the buildings get bigger. We get some more, a lot more disturbance and a lot more stormwater issues with, with kind of that same hundred and eighty-five. So, I want to talk a little bit about that alternative site layout, because getting to what you were saying before, what is the, the density, right? So, we looked at this hundred and eighty-five unit plan, still would have onsite amenities, walking trails, multifamily, again, four stories, but really, what we're doing is we're placing that multifamily in the existing area of the office buildings. So, we're really reusing that ring road to the, to the extent that we can, which is most of it, and even reusing most of the existing parking lots and kind of concentrating the development there. We'd still need a rezoning to go to RSP two, we would not need any extra density, but we would still need the height increase to get that fourth story, so we didn't have the buildings spread out. It would still have those intersection improvements, so this is what it would look like. The parking lots to the right and bottom of the screen would, those are existing parking lots today. The road comes up very much the same, and those two multifamily buildings would be placed there, basically where the existing buildings are today. And then, we would be proposing twenty cottages to the north, which would have its own kind of separate drive and cul-de-sac, have all the stormwater retained for that site, so really preserving a lot more of the site. And this is a rendering, I believe it's of the north looking south of that building, a little bit different architecture as well, a little bit more neutral in the pallets and a little bit more, more kind of simple massings. Photo simulations, I compared the proposed project on the left to the alternative site layout on the right. The buildings are a little, they appear a little bit lower, they are a little bit lower because of where they're placed on the site. They're actually a little bit lower, they're still four-story buildings, but they're lower, they're below the, the tree line. Again, you'd see the two-story buildings maybe through the trees in the dead of winter if you pull off on the side of the road. When we talk about the site disturbance, we're talking about eight-and-a-half acres of disturbance, because we're, we're not disturbing that whole area that's already developed, and we're not going as far north or as far east. The impervious coverage goes from five-point-two acres to seven-point-five, which is about two acres less than with the proposed project, and we'd have about half the number of trees removed, six-hundred-and-fifty-one. The stormwater design would use the existing systems as much as we could for that developed area, and then kind of develop the new system for those cottages. And, and Joe's already found all the area he needs for the water quality reductions for that. You'd have about seventy, seventeen to twenty fewer trips per peak hour. So, again, you're looking at ninety to a hundred-and-ten trips in a peak hour compared to a hundred-and-ten to a hundred-and-thirty with the proposed project. And you'd have base, very similar impacts to East Main Street, same mitigation. Taxes, instead of one-point-eight million, you're at one-point-three million. Still just shy of a million dollars to the school district with no cost, about a hundred-and-fifty to the town. So, that's a very quick overview of the alternative site layout. We think actually that alternative works pretty well. We think, you know, the proposed project is still our proposed project, but that alternative site layout does work very well, and we think is a very viable alternative. I went through this, it's kind of boring. So, the next steps, again, looking for your feedback. We were at the Conservation Board last week, we're here tonight, I don't think it's the twelfth, I think it's the thirteenth. The public hearing on September third. Written comments are open at least ten days past the close of the public hearing. Town board can extend it longer. The FEIS would include responses to all substantive comments, yours, the town board's, the public's. There'd be written responses, and based on that, the town board would issue findings, which include picking a preferred alternative from the alternatives that were in the EIS. And that's all I have, but happy to answer more questions.
We've got a lot to absorb.
I'll take a buck.
Yeah.
There's a lot.
Yep, always is.
It's a big.
Yes.
And we're happy to answer questions and, you know, thankful to you for your time and your staff for helping us get through this process, because it's a long process.
It is.
Very helpful.
All right, so we'll keep plugging along with the book.
What do we do now?
We have to get comments together.
Yeah, we know, but we don't meet after this until, yeah, after the third.
So, how can we do that legally?
The comment period's still open, though.
The comment period will be open, but you can individually collate your, your comments, and we can.
Oh, okay.
Craft that into a draft memo for you to look at, and then we can finalize it by the third.
It's my page. It's mine.
He's already been through half the book. You get paid by the page anyhow, right?
That's right.
You have to get, you have to get Bob's comments by the first.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, he's lame duck now.
Well.
He's a lame duck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
That was a great, great presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You know your stuff.
I live these books.
God bless you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care all.
We got one more.
Yes, we do. So, the last item on the agenda is a planning board discussion of cumulative projects impacts on Route six corridor. So, Aaron, myself, John, Robin, were discussing this this past week, and we really think we have to take this proactively. There is so much going on along this corridor, and if you add them all together, like the traffic study that they're putting together, it starts to look at that, but we really got to dig into this, because we are, we're just, it's piecemeal. We did a similar thing when we were working on, or when the application for Walgreens came in, and at the time, the bank. So, we really want to get something like that going for this. Anybody's got any thoughts, concerns?
No.
I think we got to, we got to look at it proactively, because these projects are coming, right?
I agree with you.
And.
I think it's a great idea.
There's, I think there's got to be things that are put in place in motion, at least, so that when they do come, we give answers.
The challenge is that there's two levels of boards functioning in the same area, doing different things. You've got, at the town board level, a rezoning request for this project we just heard. You've got the extension of the overlay district to the other end of the area, and the small ones in between. So, it's got a town board involvement first, before we even get to specifics at our end. And yet, I don't know how integrated the town board is approaching this, and I think from a planning board standpoint, we would like to do it on a regional basis.
Absolutely.
And, of course, we can't say what the town board should do, you know, we can make recommendations, I think, that you do it on a regional basis also, that's what I would like to see.
But we are, we are looking at that as a holistic view of all the different projects coming up.
I mean, at this point, do we look at getting a. I mean, at this point, do we look at getting a group to really start to dig into the weeds on these things? Because there's so much coming at us, I mean, I think the board is, or has, or will change the code, at least on the recycling end, the facility, I believe, is, that's been changed or will change. But someone else is going to come after that. We have the Naval Fields, you know, at some point Whispering Pines, even though it's in Somers. I really think between our neighbors and us, we really have to start looking at, you know, Lexington Avenue, I heard in Cortland is, that whole left side of the street is getting redone, you know, so there's a lot going on, and I think we just got to be up ahead of that curve before it comes to us. So, I mean, I think John and crew will probably be the best to guide us.
Do you want us to draft a separate memo to the town board?
Yes.
Itemizing some of the concerns and making the suggestion of some further study, holistic study?
Yeah, I think if we don't...
Yes, I think that would be good.
I think it helps everybody.
Certainly does.
Right? Developers, as they come in the town, the various boards in the town...
Everybody will know the direction we want to go. Yeah.
And your answers.
Be Bible. I was just concerned about one statement that was made on the last project, that the town board in doing the rezoning to RSP-2 can put certain conditions in and also pick an alternative. Is that binding, or is that something that would, they would be using that to set the outer bounds of what we then do?
To a certain degree, and I think the attorney for the applicant is still here, but you're bound, you're bound by the findings, so...
How much?
Well...
So, I mean, do we not even look at these impacts?
The point is...
Once the town board adopts an FEIS and says, these are the environmental impacts of this project, do we have to do it again?
Well, well, you're bound by the findings. If there are, if there's additional study that needs to be done, you possibly could open a supplemental seeker situation, but basically, on paper, you're bound by the findings of the town board at the lead agency, that's why your commentary should address this. It's going to be dependent on how they select or pick it and what they say about it, I think, in the findings, and I think Janet could probably speak to it a little bit, but, you know, in order to not be pigeonholed, I think the language has to be carefully crafted.
Of their approval.
Of their findings and approval, yes.
I mean, I'm not a stranger to this issue. I had these same discussions thirty years ago when I was on the other side of the table, figuring out when a rezoning is going for, and how far into the site plan did the town board have to get, so...
What side of the table was that?
One seat over.
But what, you were what, the supervisor?
No, yes.
Oh, my God.
So we had the same discussion, I mean, I'm familiar with it, but now I'm on the planning board's side, figuring out where we go as a planning board after the town board does their process.
That's a very good question.
All right, so you'll work up a memo?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is that it? To have a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Palin. Leaving us.